Good afternoon. This is the Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee. We are hearing Resolution 22-0134R. Informational hearing on the 2022 Labor Day Weekend E. coli Positive Test and Baltimore City Government Response, resolution sponsored by Councilman Costello. I am joined here by Councilwoman Ramos, Councilwoman McCray, Councilman Conway, Councilman Burnett, and Council Vice President Middleton. I want to thank everyone who is joining us today, both in person and online. I want to thank Director Mitchell and Bureau Head Yosef Kabetti for attending both last hearing and this hearing, and for telling us, sharing with us last hearing, what you knew and when you knew it. I also want to point out and thank Yosef for taking the appropriate steps on his end once the contamination was identified. As I stated last hearing, we are not here because an E. coli contamination happened. It can and does happen in any jurisdiction. We're simply here because of the failure of the communications to properly communicate and be transparent for the hours and days following the positive test. And so before we get started, we, at last hearing, we had asked a series of questions that required follow-up. I want to thank Director for you making sure that we got some of the follow-up. And so if somebody on your team can just give us the follow-up on the record, and then anything that you guys did not answer, happy to discuss, and then we'll get into your presentation.
Thank you, Chair. We're going to hand it off to Deputy Director Luna to provide the Q and A.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman and members of the committee. So we'll run down the list of questions. I'll read off each question and then provide the response. So for the first question, it was, where did the contamination start? In our response that we provided two weeks ago, we said it was detected at routine sampling location, fire engine number eight. We were, at that time, we were still investigating the source of contamination, and that'll be the topic of today's presentation here shortly. There was a request for the Montebello one and two map of sites that are tested, including all sites. We did provide that to the council members last week and submitted the sampling locations that are through our routine sampling sites. The third request was a new communication distribution plan for all correspondents. From DPW, we anticipate that those plans will be finalized by the end of October 2022. Fourth question, will you test every community in the 12th District? The response that we provided is DPW routinely tests throughout the city, and staff provided the sampling locations to the council members last week. Question number five, will DPW test for a species of E. coli? The response that we provided stated that testing for a particular strain is not standard protocol, nor is it required by EPA or MDE. There was a request to see the map of the zones. In our response to the council members, we stated that those would be shared on one-on-one briefings, and we did offer that to the Chair and to the council members prior to today's meeting. Question number seven was all-related 311 water requests. And this is the response that we submitted on behalf of Office of Emergency Management. The call center 311 used an info request SR, which automatically closes in Salesforce. So tracking closure had to be done downstream. If the need ever arose again, we would request the creation of an SR that needs to be manually closed. As far as we can tell, 311 slowly adapted to reject requests outside of the boil water advisory area. So when requests were assigned to DCHD, Special Ops, and DPW teams, they did some initial scrubbing to confirm that the individuals resided within the BWA area. We expect that deliveries, we expect that that explains the delta between the cumulative requests and cumulative deliveries. And with that, response also included a chart showing that the number of daily deliveries, cumulative deliveries, daily requests for water, and the cumulative requests for water for those multiple days starting September 6th through September 12th. Question number eight, who was leading the community liaison outreach efforts? In our response, we stated that Yolanda Winkler, the Chief of DPW's Communications and Strategic Alliances Office, led the community outreach efforts virtually, and that six DPW community liaisons were in the target area during the canvassing effort. Question number nine asked about an after-action report. In the response we provided, it stated since multiple agencies were involved, DPW will participate in the comprehensive after-action report with the administration, and that the after-action report would be coordinated by OEM, and OEM staff can provide updates on a timeline once that has been identified. Moving next to question number 10. It was a list of all locations that routinely get testing and how often they are tested, and then that information was provided in a subsequent email to the council listing those locations and dates. Question number 11, timeline of communications and writing with surrounding jurisdictions. In the response, we say, we anticipate this will take at least two weeks to collect this information as staff across multiple agencies were all involved. Question number 12, how many pallets of water was the security hired to protect? How long was it being watched? How much did it cost in security? In the response we provided, we stated that the city contracted with security and provided at all three sites overnight, and at the two sites, Harlem Park Elementary Middle School and Middle Branch Park during the distribution operations. Baltimore County had provided security in the form of an officer during the distribution hours for Lansdowne Library. The security started at 11:00 a.m. on Tuesday, September 6th, and ended as the distribution centers closed. So that would have been Friday, September 9th for Middle Branch Park and Lansdowne Library, and that would have been Saturday, September 10th at 12:00 p.m. for Harlem Park Elementary and Middle School. We estimate 36,000 cases of water were distributed at all sites combined, and the total cost for the security coverage for those, for that time period was $9,490. The last question was, had DPW ever had a positive E. coli test? At the time, we had stated that we were still researching this, and we're still trying to estimate how long it would cost. I think during the presentation and through Q and A, we do have some updated information too from our staff. And Chairman, that does complete the list of questions and responses.
Okay, thank you. And did you want to go into your presentation before we ask questions? I see we're also joined by Councilman Bullock.
Good afternoon. Yes. Is it possible to show it here, or is only on that screen? Just on this screen? Okay. Good afternoon, Chairman Schleifer and members of the committee. My name is Yosef Kabetti. I'm the Bureau Head for the Bureau of Water and Wastewater. We appreciate this opportunity to come to talk to you today about the E. coli contamination that was identified starting the weekend of September 2. I'm going to go through a presentation, I'm going to go through a presentation that describes to you what we believe to be the most probable causes, the most probable causes of the E. coli contamination. But before I continue, I wanted to start off with a few statements, just some highlights. Number one, a contamination scenario like the one that we experienced is likely to have multiple factors. There are factors such as undetected water main breaks and leaks. In fact, there were two water main breaks within the area of the positive results. We also have dead ends in the system that could contribute to stagnant water. Although there are multiple potential factors, this presentation will focus on a couple of defined actions or activities in the system that we believe are the most likely causes. Secondly, I want to stress that immediately after we were alerted to the positive E. coli results, an extensive troubleshooting and source-tracking exercise did begin. This included review and use of our hydraulic model, water model, that allowed us to run various scenarios, and based on various stressors through the system, predict how the distribution system would react. An engineering analysis was done, as well as a review of all operational records. Thirdly, this system that we have is incredibly complex and highly redundant, which is a positive feature for the system. And also, we have a very robust sampling and monitoring program that starts at our reservoirs. We sample at our treatment plants on a daily, hourly, and every 15-minute basis for various parameters, and we sample, like we mentioned in the last hearing, from 90 locations throughout the system. And then finally, I would just stress that aging infrastructure is a challenge for us, but a challenge that we are working to overcome with a robust CIP program. The average age of our facilities is 80 years old. So I'm going to quickly set the stage with this map. It may be hard to see, but if you have it in front of you, you can make out some of the features. In this map, you will note a red box at the bottom of the map that represents the area that was the defined or mandatory boil water advisory area, Sandtown and Harlem Park. The dots represent the locations where samples were taken. The red dots are the ones where we had confirmed E. coli. The blue dot represents where we had a confirmed coliform, but not confirmed E. coli. And the green dots represent all the other sample locations where we tested and determined that the quality was good. So no positive for E. coli or positive for coliform. To the top right, you will see a feature that will come up in our discussion, Vernon Pump Station. Is it pump station that typically pumps water or supplies water to the area of impact? You see that by the arrow pointing in the direction of the box. Then you see two other arrows pointing towards the pumping station, and that represents the sources where Vernon Pump Station typically sources water to distribute further. Druid Lake being one of those sources. Over to the left, you'll see Lake Ashburton. And the arrow pointing down from Lake Ashburton is the general flow, direction of flow when Lake Ashburton is feeding the zones. The purple lines are large diameter pipes, 30 inches and larger. So essentially, we had two infrastructure emergencies that occurred to the southeast of Vernon Pump Station that eliminated one of the two sources of water for Vernon. When that happened, Vernon drew exclusively from the lake, and the lake level began to drop. So we made the operational decision to shut down Vernon Pump Station temporarily until we could fix the emergencies, the infrastructure issues. The shutting down of Vernon led to the Lake Ashburton becoming the predominant supplier of water to the area of impact. There was another infrastructure emergency that occurred at the beginning of this year at Lake Ashburton that reduced the redundancies in that area, and also reduced the blending and the churn to ensure high enough chlorine levels. And so those two issues compounded together. And I will get into Vernon Pump Station in the next slide, and then follow it up with a deeper look at Lake Ashburton. Okay. That's good. This is a, I mentioned the infrastructure emergencies at Vernon. The pipe that is brown, the lines that are brown represent the, a section of that distribution system that was shut down due to a sinkhole at North Avenue. That sinkhole, as many of you are aware, is in the process of being mitigated. When the sinkhole formed, it exposed a very old, almost 100-year-old water main, a 48-inch water main. That was a significant occurrence, a significant risk, both to the work that had to be done to address the sinkhole, but then also to the workers. So the decision was made to shut off, isolate, shut off that particular main in the interest of safety. Shortly thereafter, there was an urgent need to repair valve on a much larger main, a 60-inch to 84-inch main, which is represented by the red line. That valve repair shutdown, that valve repair required a shutdown of that main, and along with the shutdown or the inactivation of the brown line, the 48-inch main, required the shutdown of Vernon Pump Station. Like I said, at that point, Vernon was drawing from Druid Lake and from that area. And when Druid Lake became the exclusive supplier of water for Vernon Pump Station, the lake level started to drop to a point where we were concerned about the quality of water coming into the Vernon Pump Station. I want to stress that when we did that shutdown, we took advantage of redundancies and were able to use Hillen Pump Station to take up the slack. These types of operational changes or modifications and adjustments are common. We make them on a regular basis. System demands change, sometimes hourly, sometimes daily. And to compensate and to ensure adequate, consistent level of quality, we switch pumps, we turn pumps on and off, we operate our valves, and this is a normal course of business. Next slide. As I mentioned, when Vernon was turned off, Lake Ashburton became the primary supplier of water to the area of impact. I also mentioned we had a sinkhole emergency in early 2022 at the toe of the dam at Lake Ashburton. The source of the sinkhole was a leak on the 48-inch main that you see highlighted in purple. That particular sinkhole was in a very dangerous position, location of the dam, potential for catastrophic impact. We considered our options. Because this main was going to be abandoned at the conclusion of the Lake Ashburton project, the tank project, and because doing, attempting any type of repairs to this main at a slope at that particular location presented too much of a risk, we determined that best course of action was to shut down that main or cut and cap that main, abandon it in place. When we did that, it reduced the redundancies, obviously. As you see, there are three mains that come out of Lake Ashburton. And in addition to that, we believe that the blending and the churn in the lake reduced, which means the chlorine levels may have been impacted. Next slide. So what this shows is that there are multiple factors that came together to create a scenario that likely contributed to the contamination in the area of impact. Again, to reiterate, the large mains being out of service was the root cause. The Kirk Avenue valve repair and the sinkhole on North Avenue. The decision was made to turn Vernon Pump Station off, and then that automatically reverted supply to the area of impact from Lake Ashburton. At the same time, the lack of redundancy that had developed over the past few months at Ashburn Lake, along with the factors I just mentioned, the combined impact was that lower-than-normal chlorine levels were likely coming out of the lake. Next slide. As I mentioned, the troubleshooting exercise began immediately after identifying the positive E. coli numbers very early in the crisis. And on the 5th of September, Labor Day, is when we, in assessing the model and looking at the data, thought that the Vernon Pump Station might be or might have a role to play in the contamination. So we restarted Vernon on the 5th of September. Two days later, to, based on the theory that Ashburn Lake, that the main from Ashburn Lake was the predominant supplier to the area, we went ahead and shut off that valve so that no more flow came out of that lake. A week after that, we were able to complete the work on the valve at Kirk Avenue, and that main was reinstated, which helped us to regulate the levels at Druid Lake more effectively. And at this very moment, Vernon Pump Station is supplying water to the area of impact as originally designed. And obviously, the testing that we've done during and after, and we continue to do, have proven that water quality has improved. So speaking of the monitoring system, again, I highlight that, you know, the map that you see here is a larger extent that shows you where we source our water, Liberty and Lock Raven, as well as Pretty Boy, which is a third reservoir that is not shown on the map. We do regular testing at the reservoirs. That the water from the reservoirs comes to those, the blue lines, which are large source water tunnels from Liberty to Ashburn Treatment Plant for full treatment, and from Lock Raven to the Montebello Treatment Plans for treatment. From the reservoirs and at the plants and throughout the distribution system, constant effective monitoring. Highly redundant system. One of the other observations is that sometimes when there is an asset failure, there are ripple effects beyond that particular area. But the criticality of executing planned projects is very evident to ensure that our assets are intact. Next slide. So as far as planned improvements and that we have, obviously, the covered tank projects, one at Druid Lake, one at Ashburton are ongoing. We expect to start Druid Lake early part of 2024 and Ashburton early part of 2023. These projects, when they're all complete, will result in very low risk of contamination because the water will be covered. Next slide. This, the picture on the right is an example of a water main replacement project. We will be accelerating assessments of the pipeline infrastructure in that area to, through leak detections and valve surveys and replace and replacement projects. We're also initiating an anode retrofit program, which will essentially, in the course of implementing a water main break, install corrosion inhibitors, since corrosion is a primary cause of main breaks. And next slide. And finally, I'll conclude with, this is a picture that depicts some of our preventive maintenance activities. On the left is a pipe walker tool that we use to inspect large diameter pipes only. And this allows us to identify any structural issues that may become problems on large pipes. And once we identify them, we're able to proactively fix. So we would have to drain the pipe and do it when it's out of service. On the right is a similar tool that inspects these pipes, but while they're in service. So this preventive maintenance program has been going on for several years, and it's a very effective tool for us to be proactive in maintaining our water system. With that, I will conclude.
So to recap, a series of DPW-related events and the decisions made by DPW to correct those events led to the contamination. Is that correct, Director?
I would say there was three major events that happened that compromised our water line. It was the Kirk Avenue valve replacement. That valve was installed in 1915. It was a sinkhole on North Avenue, which was installed in 1898. And it was an abandoned line that we had to do at the toe of the dam, which was installed in 1925. It was a result of aging infrastructure, something that this city and all cities that are aged are dealing with. I wouldn't say it was a public works issue. It's a mother nature issue that we can't control. But our job is to mitigate and respond as fast as possible and make operational adjustments to ensure that our customers get quality water, and that's what we did. So you're correct.
So if other decisions perhaps would have made, and to Monday Morning Quarterback, because that's how we're going to move forward and figure out, you know, if, God forbid, this happens again, what's the best course forward? So had the actions taken been done differently, perhaps maybe not shutting down certain pump stations, messing up the chlorine balance, had those not happened, then potentially, this wouldn't, this contamination wouldn't have happened?
I would say that's incorrect. If we would have kept Vernon Pump Station on, the lake levels would have went lower, and that could have caused significant water quality. So we look at the science, we look at the data, we look at our hydraulic model, and we make scientific engineering decisions based upon the data that we have. And that's what our team did to ensure that we have quality water and continue to have it, even with this old infrastructure and these mains. And that's what our team did. And as you see, they did a very good job.
So regardless of what actions were taken, the contamination would have happened anyways?
I say, we can't control mother nature, I would just say that. And, you know, as this, some of this infrastructure is compromised, we have to make, you know, quick, on-the-spot decisions. And I think that's what we did. And a team is not just using, you know, they're using our hydraulic model, they're looking at the system. I think one of the great things that Baltimore City has, which is very unique than many other systems, we have a tremendous amount of redundancy. So when we are able to have a 60-to-80-inch line go down and multiple 40-inch lines go down, those are significant-sized lines, we are still able to modify our system and provide drinking water to our public. And I think that's one of the core strengths of our system that you see here, that that redundancy helps us to continue to provide safe drinking water to our public, even when we have multiple incidents of aging infrastructure failing.
Yeah, so, all right, and before I get to my next question, I think that actually touches on the point that I'm making, is that water main breaks happen every single day, and you guys handle those water main breaks every single day, but we don't have E. coli outbreaks every day. And so therefore, what I gathered from seeing this is that a series of events and decisions that were made based on what, you know, what stations remained open, what pumping stations were open versus closed, and how the balance of water was coming through, was whether or not those, you know, those chlorine levels were correct or not, which then ultimately led to that contamination. So I guess my second question, before I turn it over to my colleague whose district it was in. Did DPW hire a private company to come in and treat the water at your wastewater treatment plants following the contamination?
I don't understand the question.
Did DPW hire any private contractors, any private companies to come in and treat the water at one of your wastewater treatment plants following the contamination?
No. When you say wastewater, I mean, this is a water system, so...
So at all the water treatment plants, no private company was hired to come in to treat the water after the contamination?
After the contamination? We have staff augmentation contracts, where we have staff that augment our workforce, but...
Nothing related to the E. coli contamination?
No.
Okay. Councilman Bullock?
Yes, and thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, DPW. Do have a couple of questions based upon your presentation. So you, and these are more technical questions. So you had mentioned pulling water from the lake. Again, that was affecting the chlorine levels. How often does it happen? How does that become an issue in the city in terms of having to then shift to the pulling from the lakes?
The lakes, Lake Ashburton and Druid Lake provide water constantly. So we are drawing water from those lakes on a regular basis. So...
But you had mentioned it affected chlorine levels. That's what I'm trying to understand. What's the difference there?
Well, so with, within the system, there are many points where we inject chlorine to ensure that the residual is maintained throughout the system, throughout the distribution system. So we do that at Ashburton Lake, we do that at Druid Lake, we do that at the other reservoirs to, before it actually enters the distribution system and has an opportunity to dissipate.
Okay, and so then for the public, can you also talk about, you know, water treatment as it relates to the reservoirs? Because obviously, there's a bit of a distinction there.
So I'm not sure I follow the question.
Because it seems like there are differences in the water, the treatment based upon where it's coming from and how, and what point in the system it's coming through.
So our system is... So, our system is, like I mentioned, is based on a multi-barrier approach. And we have the source water that enters the treatment plants. And at the treatment plants, the treatment is two standards that are, they're consistent. So, when they leave the plant, they're measured, we're sampling the water before it leaves, Montebello 1, Montebello 2, and Ashburn. And while it is in the distribution system, there are various sample locations for where we collect samples to ensure that the residual is adequate, and there are, there is no contamination. I'm not sure if I answered your question, but that's, the process is really based on that multi-barrier approach, so that we have a belts and suspenders approach to ensuring water quality and supply.
Right. I guess that goes back to what you're saying, in terms of less redundancy and the blending of water. And I think that was kind of what the Chair was getting at, in terms of, you know, what might have contributed along the way to this. And so, the shifting in terms of where the water was coming from, that had been some kind of contribution there.
The shifting happened, like I said, the operational adjustments are not uncommon. They're not uncommon. The high level of redundancy is a really wonderful feature that this system has. Because like Director Mitchell mentioned, when you have a large main, like a 48-inch main or a 60-inch main go down, the fact that citizens are still receiving water is testament to the redundancies and the operational changes that we are able to make, to maintain a level of service. So, from that respect, I, you know, with this particular situation, the root causes were the infrastructure failures. If we did not have those infrastructure failures, we would not have had to make some of the operational adjustments that we made. But we made those adjustments, again, to maintain water quality coming out of Druid Lake, and to ensure a continuity of supply.
Okay. And last follow-up question, before I leave briefly and come right back. The preventative maintenance you're talking about, obviously, we had some challenges here, as you mentioned, infrastructure. How do you see this then improving in the future, in terms of preventative maintenance, and what you learned in this go-around?
So, the preventive maintenance that was mentioned is specific to the larger diameter pipes, the large transmission mains. So, that will continue. That will help to prevent catastrophic failures. It helps us to have a finger on the pulse on how our large mains are doing. When it comes to the smaller diameter mains, the distribution mains, we have an active leak detection program, for instance. We have an active survey of valves that we conduct to make sure that our valves are operational. And then, on top of that, we have a, obviously, a pipeline replacement program, where our target is to replace aged pipe at 15 miles per year on a regular basis.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Council Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have one, I guess, question. Thank you all for putting together and answering the questions that we submitted. So, on the one that I submitted, all related 3-1-1 water requests, and then at the end for September 12th, our team analysis shows that there's 77 requests that are not closed. If you could just kind of explain a little more in detail of why they're not closed, that would be helpful for us.
These are the 77 requests for sampling, in-home sampling?
This is the delivery...
Oh, I'm sorry. This would be OEM.
Minus the requests.
Thank you for the question, ma'am. Deputy Chief Wallace, on behalf of OEM. I'm not aware of any requests that were not closed. However, we will definitely follow up on that today and answer back to you.
Okay. You want to give any details on how you, I guess, check to, you know, to close? We, as council members, really rely on getting our constituents to follow that 3-1-1 process.
Yes, ma'am. And I'll explain, part of the problem was initially, is we were receiving those external requests through various communications conduits. So, Health Department was getting requests, we had requests going to 3-1-1, we had them coming into OEM. Part of the resolution for that problem was to try to streamline those into 3-1-1, and then actually have follow-up calls hourly with 3-1-1 to verify each call that they had. Coming out of that on Saturday, I think where there may have been a bit of an issue was when the EOC shut down on Saturday, and there were likely unresolved SRS that we had not been aware of. I do know that following into the early part of the subsequent week, we did have resources out attempting to fulfill all of those requests. So, if we're still showing some open, we will definitely follow up on that and get you accurate information.
Thank you. Thank you for that detailed helpful information. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, the question I had was following up on the last hearing, there was, said to be internal discussions around communication strategy. I asked a line of questioning around the, you know, activation of the Joint Information Center. But in short, I guess, where do we stand currently with a renewed strategy for emergency communications moving forward, if something like this were to happen?
Good afternoon. Thank you for that question. As we stated during the last hearing, we have implemented a process where, in the event of a situation occurring like this, or some other emergency matter, we will ask that the agency that has been impacted communicate with the Mayor's Office of Communication immediately via phone call, and then we'll begin to implement the JIC as necessary. We will also make sure that if this is a matter to this nature, that the Mayor's Office of Communications will be the lead response, in terms of communicating with media, and also working with the communication liaisons from the various agencies, to make sure that they're communicating with MoGR, for example, to make sure that you and your colleagues have information to share with your constituents, but also to make sure that we have information available for media as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
My second question, Mr. Chair, was related to number 12 on the response list for the security costs. It just seems pretty high to, you know, spend almost $10,000 on security coverage. Obviously, there's a large quantity of water. Are there other ways that this could have been done? Other, I know it sounds like in Baltimore County, they use police who, you know, are already on the clock. So, I do understand the need to protect, you know, that large quantity of water, but at 10 grand, that seems, or just under $10,000, that does seem pretty high to protect water. I don't know who can respond to that, but is this a standard practice or a best practice?
Thank you for the question. I would say that our goal, as we were looking at our water distribution, was ensure, and as you can see, each day, we had increased participation in water. Our goal, understanding that we had limited supply, was ensure that it gets to the hands that was needed for folks that was in the impacted area. And we wanted to make sure, as we left that evening and went into that day, that that water was getting into the right hands. And so, again, that's something that we're looking at in our after-hour report, to see if there's something that we can do better in that circumstance. So, again, that's, as we continue to assess this incident, this is one of the items that we're looking at.
Thank you. I'll look forward for the follow-up on that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Conley?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've just got one question. Given the complexities of what we now seem to be understanding the cause behind the positive tests, I'm curious if we've thought about what we would do differently, given the circumstances that we came across? Is there anything that would change, given the recent insights?
I would start by saying, you know, from an operations perspective, I think the team performed, you know, marvelously. The speed of response, like I mentioned, the starting the troubleshooting exercise immediately, and spending the time and the effort to troubleshoot, source track, that all was very encouraging, to see that we have that mechanism in place. If there's anything that I would change, you know, I think from time to time, just to assess, for instance, the sample locations that we have in the system, is there an opportunity to maybe change some sample locations, and see if there might be different locations that might give us more representative, you know, characterizations of the water? But those are things that we can, we're talking about now internally, but overall, I think the response was done well.
Councilman Costello?
Councilwoman McCray?
Thank you.
Councilman Torrance?
I just have follow-ups to the questions that I asked. Can we get a firm timeline on this after-action report? I just want to make sure that the two sentences you sent me was not just two sentences you responded to. I actually want dates like October 1st, January 1st. I just want to make sure we have a clear determination and timeline for a report, so that we can hold you accountable to that report, so that the public knows when to expect it as well. So, that's one of my follow-up requests, your additional request. And then, also, I understand that we don't test, and it's not required by EPA or MDE. I just want to remind you, that is the floor, in terms of testing what type of E. coli it actually was. I just want to remind the agency, it was the floor. We can go above and beyond what the regulators access to. So, I'm asking you to go above and beyond what the regulators access to, before I submit legislation that makes you do it. I just want to be clear. That's it.
So, you don't have a date for that? Is that something we should just email you after for a follow-up?
Thank you for the question, Councilman. That is well underway. It began internally with OEM. This upcoming week, it's going to involve all internal agencies that were involved. I would like to tell you that it would be ready by the end of October. I think that's a reasonable expectation with this document.
Okay. Councilman Costello?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to go back to two of the follow-ups. Number 13, has DPW ever had a positive E. coli test? What was the response on that?
In 2009, we had a sample that, upon the first sampling time, it came up positive, but then we went back out to confirm it was negative. And then, in 2018, we also had the same situation. The sample was positive, and then we went back out, and it was negative. We also collected up and downstream samples. So, those were the only two.
Got it. Thank you. Then the other follow-up item was number 11, timeline of communications in writing with surrounding jurisdictions. Told this was going to take two weeks to compile?
Yes, yes, we're still working on that. There's multiple connection points to those jurisdictions, and so, we're working together as a team. We hope to have that within the next two weeks.
Thank you. Can you elaborate on what multiple connection points means, like different, I'm not going to, can you please elaborate on that?
So, for example, some of our operations folks were communicating with the other jurisdictions from an operational standpoint, from an emergency standpoint, OEM standpoint, those individuals were communicating, and they were coming into our EOC during that period. So, there are some communications there. We just wanted to make sure that we have the breadth of communications, so that we can give you a comprehensive list, and when that happened.
Thank you. So, to summarize, there's multiple different areas of professional responsibility within the city that we're communicating with their counterparts in the surrounding jurisdictions? Is that safe to say?
Correct.
And do we have a protocol for how we communicate with surrounding jurisdictions when there's an emergency of this nature? Because there are one person who initiates, and maybe it's the mayor and the county executive, maybe it's the chief of staff, maybe it's the emergency director?
Thank you, Councilman. On behalf of the emergency management community, that was myself.
Okay.
I can speak to the fact that three counties were spoken to that night by myself, as well as the three counties that we initially thought were going to be within the BWA were also part of the emergency conference call that was done via Teams. So, when the agency meeting was done, and we began to brief out that evening, those emergency managers were brought into that circle, and they were briefed.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, colleagues. I had a question on, you mentioned that two of the breaks, or one was a valve replacement on Kirk Avenue, and the other was the sinkhole. Those are outside of the zones that, you know, the system is broken up into? So, I'm curious as to, I get the, I understand with the multiple events that, you know, then the chlorine was lowered, and that caused the issue. My question is, because these two items, these two locations are outside of the zone where the other, where the contamination was, and where the other events were, how these two impacted, those two events impacted what was happening there? Because I thought the whole, the zones were so disconnected that they don't affect each other.
Thank you for the question. So, you are correct, those two large mains are in Zone 1, and Vernon Pumping Station is physically located in Zone 2. However, Vernon draws from those mains. So, that's a source for Vernon, is that pipe network that was impacted by that sinkhole and the valve repair. So, when those went down, Vernon no longer had a source to draw from...
Right.
...in Zone 1, and it resorted to drawing only from Druid Lake.
Okay. So, when we have our briefing, I'll understand how the zones actually work, because it was my understanding that, you know, each zone was attached to a different, you know, treatment plant and pumping station, so that they weren't touching each other. So, this is all, it's just new information. I didn't realize that there are some parts of the system that are influencing the other parts.
That is correct. There's, it's very interconnected, and some pump stations can pump from a different zone to, from one zone to another.
Yeah. I guess it's concerning, because we, you know, we're talking about the different zones, so that, you know, one part of the city was not going to be impacted by the contamination. So, if they are connected in certain areas, then we just have to be extra careful that the contamination from one zone doesn't go to the other.
That is correct. And there are division valves and the ability for us to isolate as needed, or connect as needed.
So, you could, in some cases, if there was another type of thing like this, isolate, I guess you did this time, right? You isolated everything to the one zone, so that the water couldn't go out to the other places?
That is correct.
Okay.
But I do want to highlight that this is the greatness of Baltimore City Water System, is the redundancy, the ability to be able to shut valves off or move water to different zones, so that when we do have infrastructure failures such as we did, we have that ability to cross-connect and not have to shut down, say, a whole zone. So, that redundancy is really core and critical to how we continue, even with water main brakes, and need to continue to provide water service.
But it also allows us to isolate if there's an incident.
Absolutely.
And that is, I think, what allowed us not to have a boil water advisory for the whole city. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And getting back to why we're here, was the communications lapse that occurred and the lack of transparency. One of the two things, number one, we, I think we covered the fact last hearing, that Twitter and Nextdoor are obviously not the proper ways to communicate with the public in a time of a crisis, and I think we're all on the same page on that. The second piece to that, that you guys said, well, it's okay, it was okay that that was only the other communications, because every door was knocked in that encatchment area, that original encatchment area between these three locations. What we saw widely reported, just about on every media station, was that there are people all... all across that encatchment area who said they didn't have anybody knock on their door, they got no communications sent to them or communicated with them, and even seniors who said they were home the entire time. And so it really, it really leaves that outstanding question is, you know, how did that communication door-to-door work, right? And so in number eight, you say that your chief of communications and strategic alliance led the community outreach effort virtually. Can you explain what you mean by, like, what does that mean, it was virtually?
Our, the individual that was responsible for that was in our EOC, you know, managing the team from the EOC. We had our executive team there so that we can coordinate, not just communications, but really coordinate how our operations are working, you know, things that we need to move and change. But when we look at our communications, we wanted to do a multi-prone approach to communications. It wasn't just boots-on-the-ground. We knew in that neighborhood that we wanted the option to have boots-on-the-ground as much as possible to get every person in their, in that, in that impact area, information as much as we could. But we also use social media. We did release the press release. The idea was to try to get the information out as quick as possible. We are doing, as you conceived, per our answers, a full scrub and of that, that we have later this month, as Chief Wallace mentioned. But we also are creating a solid communication plan that is robust and will be able to improve our responses, and we'll, we have that as well by the end of the month.
So, okay, so your answer on the community outreach part being virtually was that the chief of communications was in the EOC?
Correct.
So that, that person was not out on the street where this outreach was happening on, you know, at the doors?
Oh, absolutely not. We, it's similar to even our operations for our distribution of water. We have folks inside our EOC really giving directions to the boots-on-the-ground, because we're hearing information in, at the EOC. We have to, have to get that information out to the folks in the field. And by having individuals in the EOC and able to contact the leads that are in the field, it gives us a better communication to, to be able to communicate out into the field, but also for the field to be able to communicate up back into the EOC per, you know, the ICS structure.
So if this was done virtually, what program or what method did they use to knock on these doors in this encatchment area? Like, how did they make sure that they knocked on all the doors? I mean, when you map out the three locations, as I did as soon as I learned about this, it's basically a simple rectangle, right? That's, you know, with, with, from, I think it was engineered in the middle and the two other locations. And so where, how was, how was this door knocking done? I mean, if it was done virtually, how did the people on the street, like, who was making sure that they were actually going to all the doors and that these doors were in fact knocked? Because we haven't come across people who, who said that somebody did come to their door and did ask them, you know, and did inform them on what was going on. And so you're saying that the person who was leading that was in the EOC working on communications? I'm not sure what that means, considering the only communications that had happened to that point when this door-to-door communication was taking place was a tweet and, and a Nextdoor post. The, the communications that ended up coming out and was routinely put out and in a timely manner, that was being done by the mayor's office. So the mayor's office took over that communication, then that's when the public was actually informed of what was going on, on a, on a regular basis, and we appreciate their efforts on that. So I guess I'm, I'd like to understand, like, if in fact these doors were knocked and how they were knocked. So is, is the person who is responsible for that here today?
I can get that information to you in writing. I don't have it now. The person that was working virtually is not here. I can definitely provide a written response on how that was done to you as.
Is there anybody from the communications department here?
No.
Is there a reason why? How many people work in the communications department?
We have three individuals.
Three people. And none of the three were available to come to the hearing?
We, our goal today was to really show root cause, but we can get that information to you as soon as possible.
Well, I mean, I, I hope you can understand that it's a problem. And we had last hearing, and last hearing, we didn't really know what, what information we were going to get or where, you know, where the conversation was going. What we learned at last hearing was pretty clear that the issue was not that an E coli contamination happened, because as you guys, you know, explained to us, you know, this could happen anywhere at any time. But we were talking mainly about the lack of communication and how that needs to improve. How can we, you know, see that that's going to improve or change, or even get to the bottom of what happened there if nobody in communications is here with us today?
No, we definitely will be doing the after-action report, as well as we are preparing a new communication strategy. So with both of those mechanisms after our report, that will give a summary of different components of this emergency. We are also preparing for, for this body, a full, comprehensive communications plan with the idea of looking backwards, but also begin to look forward, going forward.
Right, but I mean, we can't look backwards without being able to have dialogue with the people who were responsible for that communication at that time. Imagine if, you know, Yosef did not attend today and we were trying to find out everything we learned today, and I appreciate the presentation is very informative. If you were not here today, most of the questions that we had, we wouldn't get answers to, and then you would have to provide the follow-up. That's only one piece of, that's only, you know, as far as the questions and stuff that was sent to you, that was only one piece of it was, you know, the root cause, how did that happen? Let's learn about that. But the real issue and the real concern that you've been hearing has been the communications. I'm just, I really would like to understand why there's nobody from the communications department here to explain to us why this entire situation did not get put out to the public sooner than it did? Why, when it finally was put out, it was put out on Twitter and Nextdoor of all places? I mean, that, I think there's a lot of people that would like to understand what the mindset was of putting it on those two platforms of all the available options. And then, and then the last thing, what we've seen routinely in the news is residents of West Baltimore who want to know why nobody came to their door. And you guys are telling us that there was an effort, that people did go door-to-door, that every, we learned last hearing that every door was knocked. And we have a lot of residents of West Baltimore that's saying that didn't happen. And so, you know, we can't move on from this without understanding what did and did not happen. I feel like we have some, we have some clarity as far as the contamination itself, but again, you know, as I stated in the beginning of the hearing, you know, I personally felt that the proper action was taken by Yosef and his team when he learned the things that we learned at last hearing, who he called and when he called. I felt relieved after that point from last hearing that, that he did everything that he needed to do on his end. Where I'm still very uneasy on moving forward in the future of, of the agency as a whole as it relates to these core services is the communications piece. And the, the thing that you're, you told us today is that, you know, this is, the cause of this essentially, you're saying, is our aging, aging infrastructure. I'm sure that's a piece of the puzzle. Our aging infrastructure is all across the city. We're well familiar with that, with that situation. But then what that also tells me is that if that's the answer, it's our aging infrastructure, then are we to believe that future water main breaks are going to lead to potentially coli outbreaks? And then if that is the case, we have no, we have no path forward on, on the communications piece, because all we learned from last hearing was that you were making changes within, within that bureau. We don't know what that means. I'm just learning it's, it's three people. So there's some type of changes going on there. You said that's going to happen 45 days essentially from then. So again, we're still looking at this point, over the next month, any potential issue that could be happening while we're sitting here, we still have no path forward on what the communication should or will look like, other than, you know, if it's a big enough scenario, then it gets referred over to the mayor's office. So when can, can the communications department be made available to the council to answer these questions?
That's a good question. We have your questions currently now. We definitely can provide a written response. If the choosing is to bring and have a more focus on the communication, we definitely can huddle our team and be able to provide you with, with the answers that you need.
So the communications department is, are they willing to come in to a, to a follow-up hearing?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. What I'd say, and I think what you're hearing from the director, he is here to respond to questions related to the communications and the handoff to the mayor's office. Certainly appreciate the communications director talking through how we move forward and what that handoff looks like moving forward. But we, given the changes in personnel that have been described happening in the communications office within DPW, we would not subject the new director or any other staff to questions that the director can answer or that we will answer as an administration in writing.
So you're saying we can only get those answers in writing, and then every time there's follow-up, we need to then circle back and then get those answers?
No. Mr. Chairman, what I'm suggesting is that if there are specific questions that we can't answer today, the most appropriate next step might be for us to respond in writing. If there are additional questions and that those questions require more public discussion, then we will certainly make ourselves available for them.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll indulge you on that, and I will send those follow-up questions in an email as I did after last hearing. But that is very troubling to me with the fact that this whole situation is under a cloud as to why there was a delay. And then once there was a release of information, why it was done in the more, most obscure method possible, and then why this, this outreach, some, some, you guys are saying it happened, the public is saying it didn't happen. So I'll send you the follow-up questions, but that, something just doesn't, something doesn't add up there. Any other questions? Any other questions? All right, thank you for joining us today. We will take a brief recess before the next hearing. Good afternoon, this is the Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee. We are holding a hearing on Bill Number 220252, Ordinance Commercial Vehicle Monitoring System at the request of Councilmember McCray. Before we get started, I know a law department has conflict, and so I'll turn it over to Hillary if you have any, if you want to just state your report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Hillary Ruley on behalf of the Law Department. We approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency, have no other issues. I'll stay on here as, as long as I can. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll go, we'll go to Finance while you're there. Pedro.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pedro, on the Finance Department, we stand by our report. I'm, I'm happy to stay for any question you may have.
Police Department?
This is Sophia Gabriot from Mayor's Office of Government and Nations. BPT supports this bill. Thank you.
Department of Transportation?
We're good, we're good. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Liam Davis, Baltimore City Department of Transportation. We stand by our bill report, which is favorable. The legislation is pretty straightforward. It simply proposes to increase the local cap that's currently in place on our automated truck enforcement cameras, officially known as commercial vehicle overheight monitoring systems. The current cap is six cameras. This legislation proposes to increase that to 16. It wouldn't force DOT to operate 16, it just gives us the ability to operate up to 16. In our opinion, we support this legislation based on the number of requests we get across the city and the limited flexibility that having only six cameras at our disposal to move around, making that a challenge. I also want to mention that this program differs from the other automated enforcement programs operated under ATVS Division in that it is a loss leader, meaning we lose revenue off of these cameras. It's not a huge sum of money that we're losing, and we think that the quality of life benefit of getting trucks off of the local, smaller residential streets that are not designed for truck traffic, those benefits outweigh the modest physical impact that happens annually. And I'm available to take any questions.
Yeah, I'm going to have some questions, but I'll turn it over to the bill sponsor for an introduction to the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As Mr. Davis from DLT stated, it is a pretty straightforward bill. The current law mandates that only six cameras may be operational at any one time to enforce the city's commercial vehicle monitoring system. And having only six cameras predominantly centralized around the port of Baltimore allows for illegal driving behaviors to persist and long-term property damage to ensue impacting all stakeholders, especially our homeowners. I know my colleagues can attest to the great frustration of residents who come in contact with these illegal behaviors regularly and have experienced the consequences. Increasing the operational camera threshold from six to 16 will expand the depth of cameras across the city and ensure trucks stay on their designated routes. This is also just about ensuring that our residents are afforded safe, habitable, and thriving neighborhoods that are free from the unattended consequences of unauthorized commercial vehicles. I want to thank DOT for their continued assistance on this matter, working with me on this particular bill to make sure that we get it right. And thank you to the chair and my colleagues for considering this piece of legislation.
Thank you. All right, Liam, how much money did we lose on this camera program?
So based on the numbers that my team shared, each camera has a monthly fee associated to operate. So it's just under $6,000 per month to operate a camera. Now that, what does that mean in terms of operate? Well, the vendor is responsible for installation, maintenance, repair. The city gets a pretty good deal on that, in that sense. They're responsible for the upkeep and maintenance. So with six cameras, that totals roughly $35,000 in expenses per month, and then annually that accounts to roughly $430,000. There is a, there is a portion that is offset based off of the revenues. So there are fines associated, but just as a reminder, it's a three-tiered system. So the first time a truck gets popped, it's a warning. The second offense is $125, and the third offense and any offense after is $250 per occurrence. So the revenues have ranged, they went down during COVID, but you'll see anywhere between 50K to $125,000 to offset that, that annual $430,000 total.
So you said, okay, so like what it, okay, 125, you said, and 1 and 50?
That's, that's been the recent ranges in recent years.
And so when we move them to a different location, do, does, does the vendor do unlimited locations? Like, when you're moving it around, they'll set up a base at any location you want?
So there's a, there's a test, there's criteria, there's certain criteria, and I believe it's mentioned in the bill report, and we have to follow all, you know, state regulations. But part of the installation process includes a study. You're obviously looking to install these on non-designated truck routes, so you would never put this on a truck route, because trucks are permitted to be there. So you're, you're looking for locations that, based off of citizen complaints, 301-1 requests, elevated political requests, community requests. We really try and spread them out as much as we can, but it's really challenging, and here's part of the problem, in the areas around the In the areas around the port that, um, Councilwoman McCray mentioned, there is such consistent, persistent violations that it's ve- really hard for us to justify moving those cameras. So right now, we're really only rotating two or three, um, and we're getting requests all over the city. Um, so to answer your question that was belabored, there's a study process, they'll see how much truck traffic is coming in. If it's only like five a month, that probably doesn't justify it. But if we're seeing 30, 40, 50, even more numbers, then we'll justify it and, and put it in.
So you guys do that study, or this company does a study?
Um, so I believe the vendor conducts the study with our oversight, ATVS oversight.
Gotcha. So what's that additional cost for every new place that you want them to go to?
So we can follow up to get you that specific information, because I'm not familiar with how, like whether it's assigned, that revenue is assigned to the camera installation.
Okay.
Um, but we'll, we'll work to get that for you.
Okay. Questions? Councilman Costello?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Mr. Davis, what's the process to move one of these existing cameras?
Sure. So, um, what I always recommend whenever there's an ATVS division request, um, the first is to, and, and if you mean move, do you mean request a new location?
Yeah, so, so right now, we have a cap of six. This bill brings us to a cap of 16.
Mm-hmm.
Um, select a location in my district that you're familiar with, which is problematic per se. Let's say, um, say Charles Street and Wells Street.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if we had one there and we wanted to move it to, say, Ford Avenue and Race Street, um, what would be the, the process?
So the process is, it's similar to how our alternative ATVS programs go. So, um, there is, what we generally recommend with a speed camera, a red light camera, is entering in a traffic calming request. So it sounds a little bit unconventional here, but you would essentially put in a request for the new location and specify within your request that you want a, a truck camera at the location. Once that is completed, you could flag it with me or our stakeholder engagement office. We have an ATVS request form for, that we actually, after that 311 request is created, the person interested in the camera can fill out the form, and they just write the 311 number on there. Um, that then goes to our ATVS division chief and the investigation, it goes in line, in queue, to be investigated. Um, as I said, they're, they're popular, so there, there is like a, a lengthy list of locations, um, which is one of the right, one of the reasons why we're interested in pursuing this legislation.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. How much are the ticket, how much are the tickets, uh, for a violation?
So it's three-tiered. First violation is a warning. Second violation is $125. Third time and every offense after is $250.
Okay. And do you have the information about how many people are repeat offenders versus how many are new?
We could pull that, uh, information, and what's interesting too is there's a, a safe, safety valve essentially built into the current system. So if you're just a local company who is like, look, my business is here, and it's not on a designated truck route, and I have to use this road to get there, what we'll do, when they, when we send the warning, the notice explains this, they can send our ATVS division their bill of lading, which is their delivery schedule and location. And we can set, we have trucks in the system where the violation is automatically waived because they're making a local delivery and there's no, you know, alternative.
So how many?
We can track who's getting these and not.
All right, that's actually, my first question on my list here is, is how many businesses are there in the city that you can't get to via truck route? I mean, there's a lot of corner stores and a lot of others that obviously you have to drive through a neighborhood. So of the businesses in the city, do you have an approximate number of how many?
I would assume, um, at, at a minimum in the hundreds, probably in the thousands. Um, it's, it's significant.
So how do we track that? So, you know, if a corner store's got a delivery coming from hers chips, how are they supposed to know that that delivery's coming in on that day and not to find that, that potato chip delivery?
Yeah, so what's interesting is, we always know there's going to be some variations in businesses located off the truck routes. Um, but the truck routes are there to kind of get these deliveries like 95%, 90% on the truck routes, so you keep the disruptions to the least amount as possible. Um, where we put these truck cameras, they're generally not on like the sleepy street with the corner store. They're generally on like an arterial road that isn't designated a truck route that trucks sometimes will use to, to, to cut through. And I think of, in Council District Eight, Councilman Burnett is very familiar with Cook's Lane. Um, so there, we see it on cut-through arterial streets. And the bottom line is, is that we have a designated truck route map for a reason, and that's to, to, um, you know, deter trucks on residential streets.
Gotcha. And so where are these six cameras currently?
Um, so I have the list of where they've been advertised. Let me pull this up. So there's actually, uh, these aren't the locations where, like I'm, I'm giving more locations than six. These are the total locations where they've been advertised over time. So 1700 block of East Fayette Street, I believe that is still active. 400 block of Pulaski Highway, that should be active. 1400 block of Broning Highway.
Go a little slower. What was that second one? I, I just need the active ones. What was that other one?
Uh, 1700 block of East Fayette Street.
Okay.
The 400 block of Pulaski Highway. The 1400 block of Broning Highway. Um, and then, this is where, it's, this is, after those three is where we kind of shuffle them around. So I know that we've recently moved a camera to Preston Street. Um, we did have one on Cook, Cook's Lane in District Eight. Um, and on Baltimore Street, we had one on, uh, across from Patterson Park.
Okay. And if you got 10 more, where would you put them?
So, um, me personally, I would like to look at the truck route map to, to make that decision, but honestly, this is something where your feedback from the council, from the community associations is actually really helpful. Um, you know, we're the people kind of recommending and creating the truck route map, but you're the boots on the ground, your neighbors know where the trucks are really, um, skirting the, the law. And I, and I also want to add too, because we were very thoughtful about this before pursuing this legislation, uh, with, um, the bill sponsor, Councilwoman McCray, um, we've geo-coded the truck maps. We've sent the geo-codes to Garmin, to Rand McNally, to Google, to, you know, Apple Maps. Now, we can't force these third-party vendors to update their maps with our geo-codes, but we're making that attempt. We've also, um, deployed and are still actively installing better truck route wayfinding signs so that we're actually, not, like, a lot of the historic signage in the city says, if you're a truck, you can't be here, and that's all we're saying. Now we have signage that is like, this is a truck route, to stay on the truck route, take this turn. And we're trying to help the truckers, um, you know, help them out in terms of knowing where the actual roads are. So we've tried to walk this in a very balanced nature.
Thank you. And do you pay for the signage, or does this vendor pay for the signage?
So we paid for the signage and the, that, so that's, there's a, it's a little tricky there too. Um, we were mandated by the state legislature when I first joined DOT. Uh, my first day at DOT in 2019 was signee die, and three days later, joint chairman's report is published, and we had a list of funding restrictions on our HUR, and one of them was a better truck route, um, wayfinding signage plan for the city. So we had to develop a plan, we had to order the signs, you know, it was, I don't know, maybe 50 grand? Something like that.
50 grand. Okay. Um, so based on just the math that you gave us, um, six camera, uh, the, for these six cameras and the amount that it costs versus what it's generating, we're losing on average approximately $345,000 a year. If we took that same loss evenly across the board, which I assume we'd probably lose even more, because if you're saying these are the strategic spots, and I just mapped it out, and they're basically all in South Baltimore, primarily in downtown range where you have the most traffic. So if those are the most, uh, sound locations and ones that have the most offenders, I would, uh, have to assume the next 10 would, you know, would diminish from there. And so, uh, we're estimated, um, if we kept it even with this, that we'd then be losing a million dollars a year.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a comment regarding that, because I think it's something that we need to correct about this not being, that we're losing funds. I think that we need to speak to that some of these cameras are actually cost neutral. Some of these cameras are actually making a decent amount of money. So this is not something where every single camera that's being deployed out here is losing money and costing the city over a million dollars a year. And, um, Mr. Davis, if you can speak to that?
I, I would say this too, even though the cap increases to 16, we're going to slowly scale up, and it might be something where we add two cameras, like initially. And just adding those two will help us spread these out a little bit more.
Gotcha.
Um, and, you know, if you do the math, it checks out as, you know, costs 70, roughly $70,000 annually to run one of these. So you might add an additional $100,000 in expense next year, or whenever, assuming these get set up, and you subtract the revenue.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. Uh, anybody else? Uh, Council Vice President?
Uh, just to kind of add my, so, um, and it just made me think of how we really have to look at a lot of these locations. And one is specific that, um, just came to my mind, uh, we have areas that have high traffic of, um, sex trafficking, prostitution. I know that one of the truck routes, uh, Wabash, then some of them turn on Garris Boulevard, which is a well-known prostitution record. Um, you know, those are really areas that we, those cameras, we really...
I will definitely be writing that feedback down.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just one quick question I had. Um, one of the complaints that we get in my district, uh, and the need for cameras is when there's a change in a traffic pattern, whether it's like construction, but in, in my case, it was the redo of the intersection of 33rd and Hillen, where then we had trucks going, now we put speed bumps there, but that was already planned, so it wasn't a reaction, but the, um, and then also on Lakeside where trucks were going in that way. Is that something that residents could call and say, hey, we need, you know, a truck camera here, there was a change in traffic pattern and the trucks are going through? Is that the scenario that, um, you're envisioning?
Yeah, so I, and if it's desirable, I can share the map with the chair. Um, but we have the truck route map on our website, and I think it's helpful when the public is aware, okay, if I see trucks here, they should be here, but if I see trucks here, they shouldn't be here. So like, I guess for the community associations, it's important to understand which routes in your neighborhood are the truck routes. Um, and that will help them communicate to you when they're seeing abuse of the roads, for, you know, lack of a better term.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions? Nope. All right, do we have a motion to move this, uh, bill?
Moved.
Thank you.
All right, you guys have a tie over there.
That's all right.
Tie goes to Councilwoman Ramos. Um, so moved by Ramos, seconded by Burnett. Um, we'll do a roll call.
Yes, sir. Chair Schleifer?
No.
Chair Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Costello?
Aye.
Mr. Costello votes aye. Vice President Middleton?
Aye.
Vice President Middleton votes aye. Member Ramos?
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mr. Torres?
Aye.
Mr. Torres votes aye. Mr. Conway?
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Mr. Chair, that's the vote. One negative. The bill can move to secondly on, uh, Monday the 3rd. Let's see, sorry.
Thank you very much. Uh, we are adjourned.